You don't.
Okay, so.
What she said.
Inner gang chemistry. Some more between both of those involved. I mean, it should be working. Hello, everyone. This is the Wednesday, July twenty, Thursday, July twenty. Meeting of the C E P B. We will start with who is present, which is Linda Laird, Bob Walker, and myself, Renee Hill. And on that note, we're the Civic Association. All to water. So we start with a low call.
And you just did it.
Yeah, I really just did it. Okay, so. Is general public comment, is there anyone in the public that wishes to say anything? But the zero with the.
There is no members of the public present.
Or is there?
I think people with no worry.
People with. Do we eat now? There's no minutes to approve.
No, this is a special meeting, so we only have the two, two topics that we're allowed to speak on today.
Right to it. The old business, which is the beach, the nourishment of beach nourishment selection. And it starts with a weeks introduction.
I have a PowerPoint that I'll share. Okay. So I put together a PowerPoint on the, uh, the current standings of the beach nourishment. Minimize the attendee so I can see it. Alright, so first, uh, the beach management plan thresholds for action, uh, as we've noted in, several meetings, we've eclipsed the, the threshold for which we would start to pursue a beach nourishment. Most notably, the loss of, uh, four hundred thousand cubic yards, as previously noted. I know, uh, Nicole Sharp is on the call, um, she's been crunching some numbers and I'd like to ask her if she can speak to the, the status of the beach a bit.
Before she's allowed to talk. Does the board remember that originally was estimated right after the storm, the last eight hundred thousand yards? So we've got half back, as I say, I must say, it was six hundred, five fifty.
Yeah, I think it was about five fifty.
Oh, okay, I stand clear. Thank you.
But I think we've gotten.
Nicole, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me? Sorry, I'm, I had to unmute.
Yes.
Oh. So, yes, um, good afternoon. I really appreciate you taking the time out of your day, uh, for this meeting to chat about the beach re-nourishment project. So as Dan mentioned, our survey crew was out on the island in June, conducting your permit required physical monitoring surveys in order to assess the condition of the beach. So, uh. Yes.
Because someone just teleported from Massachusetts. I'd like to hand over the, uh.
For fearless reading.
Yeah, to actually have Chairman here, but I'll continue the meeting in the spirit of.
Yeah, yeah, by all means, continue as.
But Danny would like to.
My apologies for being late.
No, but we'd just like to include the fact that John Wade is not here as well. Sorry, Nicole, I just thought from a protocol perspective, that was necessary. Your own.
No, thank. Thank you. I appreciate the update and, uh, good afternoon, Chairman Wade. I was just getting into that, uh, aptum was out on the island in June, conducting our permit required physical monitoring surveys in order to assess the condition of the beach. Um, here is where we have our surveyors go out and take, um, a survey of the beach every about thousand feet at the F D P R monuments. And from the survey, we're able to determine volumetric changes of the beach, um, and also how the mean high water shoreline position is changing. So from that survey, as we've, you know, discussed in, uh, a few other meetings and I've discussed with Dan, how we have to look at volume is from the very edge of the dune, the landward portion of the dune, the whole way out to the depth of closure, which is about thirteen feet on Captiva. So it's a very large portion of the profile. However, um, from the storm, a lot of your sand was pushed from the dune and the dry portion of the beach into depths between minus five and minus fifteen feet. So when I'm reporting the volumetric changes, you have to keep in mind that, that we're talking from the landward portion of the dune, the whole way out to this depth of closure, which is where under normal, uh, wave activity, uh, sand really wouldn't be entering and exiting the beach profile. So under typical conditions, this is the relatively stable, uh, portion of the beach profile. Under storm conditions, as we saw during hurricane Ian, it changed very dramatically. So volumetrically, the numbers are a little bit misleading. It shows that we have about eighty-eight percent of the volume remaining in the active beach profile. However, when you look at it from a construction standpoint, that's where we have, um, a lot more volume, uh, the construction template standpoint, we have a lot more volume not in that portion of the beach profile. And we haven't been able to get to that number yet, but I should be able to shoot it to Dan, uh, shortly. But if we look at the, uh, the last survey, we had about eight hundred thousand cubic yards missing from the beach construction template. So that's a, a quite a dramatic amount. And as I also mentioned, we looked at where the mean high shoreline position was compared to the amount of sediment we placed. So if we look at it, how wide is your beach now compared to when we constructed the project? You only have twenty-seven percent of the width placed remaining. So you can see between the volume and the mean high water shoreline location that the beach is really out of this equilibrium with a lot of that sediment in the lower portion of the profile where it's not really providing any protective benefit. To the beach. Yes, it may trip up a wave, but you know, your dune and upper portion of the berm have really been eroded back to, um, pre-June twenty twenty-one conditions in some places. So over the past year, we really only saw a little bit of recovery at three profiles. The rest of your profiles along the shoreline continued to erode. So, uh, it's, you know.
It's getting worse, did you say?
Yes, it's still eroding. So, um, we're continuing to see an erosion trend on the island.
Nicole, quick question. Twenty-seven percent of the width left after nourishment. Assuming that the hurricane did not happen, post-three years nourishment, isn't that a number of usually about fifty percent anyway?
So typically, we see volume at this point, volumetrically is where we'd expect to be. We wouldn't expect your mean high water shoreline to be that low. At this point in your monitoring period, I would say, I would anticipate it to be anywhere between seventy to eighty percent of the beach width remaining. So it is a lot lower than we would anticipate at the current cycle in your re-nourishment.
Excuse me, Nicole, I'm a little confused. We have lost seventy percent from our last beach re-nourishment until we confused. What are you saying? But she said three years post a normal nourishment, we would still have seventy-eight percent of it. Yeah, we have twenty-seven percent now of the width. Right, the, the, the rule of thumb has always been twenty-five percent first year. And then it decrees over the eight-year period where in final, it's seven, it's twenty-five percent of it. But after all these re-nourishments, that's why we're one hundred percent. Look, so you're, you're, you're left with the delta of twenty-five percent more beach. That's how the eight percent of our beaches in the depth of closure. Yeah, so, so Nicole, just to put it in my obtuse mind, what you're saying is even though in a normal eight-year cycle, we expect to lose seventy-five percent, but we have gotten a twenty-five percent gain over the, over the eight-year period. You're saying now we're in eighty percent loss altogether for three years.
You're at about a seventy-two percent loss right now.
Seventy-two, okay, yeah, alright, great. So bottom line is we've, we, yeah, got it. Okay.
So the.
This is, hold on one second. So the bottom line is, this is way over the normal averages of beach loss because at this rate, it's safe to assume that instead of the twenty-five percent delta, we might end up with, at this rate, especially if there's another storm, we could be handed a maybe of ninety percent or one hundred percent.
Correct.
Thank you.
So you said the twenty-seven percent of the width, we have. Are there different parts of the beach where they're wider? Cause I've seen parts of the beach that seem fine in terms of width, although the, the dunes are sort of not very good.
But yes.
Example, are there, where, where? Twenty-seven percent is one number, but I would assume it's an average. And so where is it bigger? What is it less?
So we are noticing north of Jensen's curve, the beach widths are a little bit narrower there. And then as you move further south, um, we have a slightly larger width there until you get to Blind Pass, and then that has narrowed there.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Nicole before I move forward?
No, let's move forward because I have some questions on the bid here.
Okay.
Well, I got a question for the both of them. If eighty percent, call it seventy percent, whatever the numbers of our original nourishment, the last nourishment, excuse me, is in the depth of closure, can we recover that sand in a nourishment?
Unfortunately, you cannot. So that would probably have a detrimental impact to the beach. And it would be very difficult to get a dredging, um, equipment out there because it's very shallow. So the state frowns down upon stealing sand. Well, I wouldn't say stealing it, uh, placing sand, um, from that area, um, to um, a further location on the beach.
But I have a question. So to, to Bob's point, if we're still within that depth of closure, doesn't, doesn't that still give us the advantage of having less cubic yards to fill?
Well, your construction template usually only goes to about minus five feet um, within the template. And a lot of the sand we're seeing is located between, you know, minus five and fifteen feet. So it's outside your construction template and it's, um, lingering in, you know, tross or, you know, at the very thin layer at the toe of, um, your beach profile. And that would take, you know, several years for, or even, you know, decades for that sand to get back onto the beach.
Is that based on experience or assumption? I mean.
Uh, it's based upon experience. So when we saw the oh-five, oh-six storms hit the panhandle of Florida, um, we saw similar things where the sand was located, um, offshore. And it took over ten years for that sand to recover.
Okay, thank you.
So, so the, so the coastline is, is shallower than it has been in the past, but it's still not so shallow that it affects our need for the cubic yards.
Well, let's talk in the beach nourishment, not in pleasure. It'll be shallow. The elevation is less than it was before. There's more sand in the water. But the problem is that sand in the water isn't necessarily going to go back on. It'll, it'll calm itself down, but it's Nicole's based on experience. Or coming back. Walter's Elkhorn, up to Sandbar, hundred yard mark. Exactly, which it is. So you had a question a minute before.
Yes, I have a question. So we've got a lot, we've got more sand in the water and we got some Mike Spears to sprinkle as we have some big sandbars out there. So now we do the re-nourishment. Then we have a storm. Does the fact that we have all this water, this sand in the water make a difference with the storm and what happens?
It, it really depends on what type of storm we're talking about. If it's a significant Ian-like event, um, it may aid in creation of a little bit of a slightly larger sandbar offshore, which could help trip up the waves a little bit more, but, um, I don't think there would be a significant difference.
Well, so and it won't sort of just fill, soak again, make a big storm and it pulls out some of the water and will just fill in between the sandbar and the beach and make a bigger beach.
I mean, that, that's kind of the question I asked and, and I said, has it been their experience? The sand somehow gets back on the beach during calmer hydrodynamic situations. Just to answer, no, it takes a long.
Okay.
Okay. Dan?
So now I'd like to go over the beach nourishment bids we received. As we described in the, the previous meetings, we submitted for a best and final offer from both Beach Marine and Great Lakes Stretch and Dock. And essentially both, uh, entities, Great Lakes Stretch and Dock kept their bid the same at twenty-six million, six hundred and seventy-two thousand, fifty dollars. Weeks Marines bid increased by approximately two million dollars to twenty-eight million, fifty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. Uh, these are variable quantities that may, uh, be adjusted plus or minus twenty-five percent depending on our, our sand volume needs. And then it's important to note that this bid window that they've both bid in occurs during sea turtle nesting season. So we have to account for uh, sea turtle relocation costs, uh, which we received a proposal of roughly a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Um, okay, so I would like to ask some questions. And, and Nicole, this is where you could be of tremendous help. I did a little digging around and asking questions to others that are involved in beach re-nourishments. And the number one question is, why would we ask Weeks to plant? And all they're going to do is get the obvious companies that would plant and, you know, add their twenty-five percent of what have you. That's one question. And is there anything else that could be pieced out on these projects where basically we can direct, we go to the subs versus, uh, I mean, for example, and also what happens if, like you said, the, uh, they're going at twenty-four dollars a cubic yard based on eight hundred thousand. Um, so even if they did half that, there would be a substantive, uh, difference, but that's only in the actual material costs. Great Lakes, that's the same stuff in their business. They got a million dollars in claimings.
So, uh, John and I did a bit of digging into the, the planting portion of this, uh, I had John Rieger seek out a independent bid for the plantings, um, he's got his hand raised, so believe he wants to speak to this.
Yeah, so what I had found, uh, is that what you're saying is true, uh, for the most part, Weeks did add a little bit of a percentage onto their bid, uh, for, for asking for the plantings, but uh, I received the same bid from Earth Balance uh, as, as to the price that Great Lakes had quoted us. So they weren't adding anything.
The independent received back was eight hundred thousand planted a dollar a piece, the same as what Black and Great Lakes.
Okay. And then the other question is, in the past, what we have done, and Nicole, this is a question mainly for you because you're right there during the beach re-nourishments. There's a bid, bid here for screening to remove unacceptable material. Did, in the past, has there been actual, what is, what is considered unacceptable material?
So this is a, um, protection that we put against, um, both you and the contractor in case there's some material that doesn't meet the sediment Q A Q C plan in your permit conditions. So it delineates roles and responsibilities upfront. If, um, sand that does not meet the sediment Q A Q C plan somehow gets placed on the beach. So this could, you know, occur if there's a spot in the borrow area that just has a pocket of, um, you know, subpar sand. So we have not ever had to use this category, but we put it there. So costs are negotiated upfront and during construction, i- it makes things a lot easier and it doesn't leave you open for claim during construction also.
So is, so the, the unwanted material is pretty much identified pretty quickly as soon as it comes out of the tube.
Correct. Yes.
So wh- why can't there just be an observer just standing there and say, whoa, stop, you're throwing in bad stuff, stop immediately? What does that mean by screening? Is that a physical thing or is that a? Well, what she just said in engineer speak with the QA this and the QA that, um, and Nicole, if we could keep it more to layman's terms, that if they're not, if they're getting a different sand by going too deep or whatever in a follow area, that if that were to happen, which according to Nicole really has, that this puts the oaths on them to deal with.
And it's.
Yeah, and I'm saying, well, wait a second, why can't there just be an observer? You, you know, to say, wait a minute, what's that black stuff coming out? Call the dredge right now. Tell them to stop pumping the stuff. So you're stuck with maybe twenty yards of bad stuff or whatever.
The dredge is, I think I've.
And then what?
No, no, then they, they lift their tube up and they go somewhere.
They have to move it.
But the whole point is, Nicole, how many times has this happened since nineteen eighty-eight beach re-nourishments? Zero, right? Are you there, Nicole? She's down here. Oh, she's out here.
There's no way she can speak to that.
Yeah, no, she's, she's.
Hello, can you, can you hear me now?
I mean, they go out there and check these areas. Yeah, no, go ahead, Nicole. Bob made a good point, but go ahead. How many times, actually, again, we've had bad material come up?
So we have not had this problem historically at all. But the problem is in order to have someone out there at the pipe, you need to have someone positioned there twenty-four, seven. And the costs associated with that are greater than these remediation costs. So yes, we could have someone looking at the sand coming out twenty-four, seven.
Nicole, I have to interrupt. I'm not trying to give you a hard time, but let's do the math here. How many days is the, is the slurry coming up? Is it like thirty days?
Um, it can be forty-five days, sixty days.
So you mean to tell me that two people wouldn't want to make twenty-five or twenty-eight hundred dollars a day standing there, thumbing their Instagram, trying to make sure that no mud comes out? Come on.
So we, we typically have someone there about twelve hours a day, um, out on the beach inspecting the beach, you know?
Forty-five days, a hundred and eight thousand dollars. Yeah. That's a good point. What's, that's what I'm saying, a hundred dollars an hour. Yeah. Two people, two buses each an hour. No, no, you don't need two people. They take turns. Oh, I hear two, they're going to charge us a hundred dollars an hour. That's something else. They don't have any. Listen, it's just, it's, it's just a, it's an add-on to make extra monies or.
But we don't get charged for this.
So nothing. Well, then I take, I take forgiveness. Nicole, let me tell them. Cost negotiated, so there's no confusion. If it happens, oh, who's responsible? How much is it going to cost?
But I think it's wonderful.
No, Nicole, that's brilliant. I'm, I'm sorry. I thought we will pay you anyway.
No, no, so we've never had to use that line out of them. So there's never been a cost, but we like to have it upfront in case there is an issue.
Yeah, I, I got you. Thank you. Because, you know, the way it was laid out here, I thought it was, it was, you know, we had to pay regardless.
Another question, variable costs. So we're estimating eight hundred thousand cubic yards. Um, how does this work? Do we do another measurement? Uh, closer to when it is done and then we figure out we really need eight hundred or six hundred or?
Yes, so that's correct. So we will, um, use our survey we have now and see what volume, um, is available under the template to place and then also by permit.
What happens? Okay, I got it. Let's say it comes up to a million and we don't have the money, then it would be huge saving.
Alright, I, I apologize. I have to go on mute, uh, real quick. I'm at an appointment with my nephew and I have to help him real quick. So, uh, if you could give me a minute or two, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Well, I don't think that it is. Yeah, I, I think it's not exceeding that.
Right, so we can go up or down twenty-five percent. It would be at the discretion of the board if they wanted to see the extra material. Uh, they've estimated.
Say our budget is X and that's as much as we're doing, even though it may be recommended, we put in a million, you say, no, we don't have any.
That, that's a possibility, yes.
I think that's absolute. I think that we don't need to. I think that we can afford to shave twenty percent off this.
Good.
The other, the other question I had.
Twenty percent, three million bucks right there on the, on the.
You say twenty percent, you're saying go from eight hundred thousand to six fifty?
Yeah.
If that's what we believe that when we talk.
I think we have to draw the line. No one.
Now or later.
No, I would do it the minute. Well, then we're forgetting what it is, so we need more.
I would wait until we're closer as a recommendation because, you know.
Oh, when I say now, I mean as an objective.
Oh.
Yeah, that's true, an objective. Yeah, why do we have to pay?
If it's over eight hundred now, they're going to hit eight hundred.
Sorry, I'm, I'm back now.
Hey, it's cool. Hey, Nicole, it says project site layout and data collection. If we're paying your firm several hundred thousand dollars to prepare all the directions and diagrams for them, why do they want an extra seventy-five thousand dollars? Uh, I'm a little, you know, it's like you're paying the architect.
So they have to take all the files and put them into their system and they load up a high pack system and they're going out there constantly surveying probably much every, you know, hour, two hours, seeing where they stand volume-wise. So it's a, a part of their administrative services that they need to do in order to construct a project.
I see. Okay, so in other words, to feed the data to their wireless GPS.
Mm-hmm, correct. And, and we're constantly feeding them updated data based upon the, um, preplacement surveys that they're conducting. So it's a, a interactive process of modifying the template throughout the, the whole construction period.
Well, when we get close, I mean, I don't care. It's just, I'm just thinking this is my.
Dan, I just, uh, want to point out one other line item that's very similar to the screening to remove unacceptable material is the sea, sea turtle relocation trolling. I don't believe we had to do that at the last one. If we did, it was only for a day or so. So that, that's an allowance cost as well.
You, you are correct. The past two projects, we have not used that item.
Turtle.
Yeah, the sea turtle relocation crawling. Forty thousand for Great Lakes and sixty-eight for Weeks.
So Nicole, is I and J just potential costs?
Correct.
And also K. Yeah, they have a footnote of one that reads only in requesting the vision. I think thirteen. Page three. Alright, so realistically, i- it's sort of a fluctuating, if we do X, we pay Y.
Mm-hmm.
That's very easy to understand. Um, and I just want to understand better some of these items and what exactly takes place. Turbidity monitoring? What, what is involved in turbidity monitoring?
So that is a permit requirement. Uh, the contractor has to hire a third-party monitor to observe the water quality. So they go out and take four samples a day to make sure we're not over a certain threshold. If we are over a certain threshold, we have to, um, shut down to make sure that the water quality conditions, um, don't get any worse and it lets that, you know, sediment in the water table to calm down. And then once, you know, conditions are back to normal again, then the dredger can recommence construction.
I gave that to the five people, it's Tyler, it's also true. I know. And, um. Well, hold on one second. So the turbidity monitoring is not something that you are, you have to hire a third party for the turbidity, you're not.
Correct. Yes, we are not allowed to do it and the dredger is not allowed to do it.
Do they need companies to do that? Cause you know, like Bob just pointed out, that's like, uh, five hundred to a thousand per guy to go on a pontoon and put his cup in the water.
So you have, so it has to be a certified turbidity monitor through the Department of Environmental Protection. So these have certified qualifications and they, uh, if someone is new and they've never done it before, the D E P would not accept them. They have to be a reputable firm that has experience.
Okay, so they have to be a little, so it's not. The whole program. That's, that's, that's a university program, probably has a whole program. Yeah, I mean, this one is. I'm just trying to sort out what are just engineering perks that engineers, you know, that permitting versus what Bob just pointed out. Are there any like universities that provide the service where it benefits academia versus engi- engineering firms, uh, founders?
I'm, I'm not familiar with any universities that do conduct it, but I know, um, other universities help conduct biological monitoring and they do charge for it. So it's still not a in-kind service.
Now, is this a lot number that it's, or is this an estimate? Or not to exceed number, the one twenty-five?
Not to exceed. So that's what they're saying. It'll cost for the whole project.
And that depends on, uh, how many, uh, how many days the project is going, correct?
Yes, yes, so.
What was, you know, you know what I mean? Okay, mobilization and demobilization for Great Lakes, those are. It was like five, four, five. Oh, no, it was ten million, it seems like just leasing over the.
That's exactly it. The way I see this is that there's two, there's two elements, there's two variables in this entire project that really need, that needed to be.
About the sand and getting there in no way.
That would be A and D. Okay, everything else really is non-consequential. It's been a dark stew, the tax carries. And we had an opportunity for the last sixty days to, to negotiate A. And Dan, where did we get with that? We are at ten million now. What was the original bid?
They held the original.
As we anticipated. So we had no success in that. As far as D goes, I think, as I just said earlier, I think that we do have an opportunity to reassess the needs and maybe just draw the line.
Sure, well, I really, it'd be a point five shutout.
And, and I think we're never going to know the difference.
I wouldn't say that. That's, that's not based.
It's not a hard number either.
Okay, can I ask the question?
Cause the grant reimbursements are percentage.
Can I look at Look at what the, so we have two things to do with seal planting and the uh, the fill, right? Both of them, one is we're putting in more sand and the other one is we're putting in uh, the seals and the plantings to try to capture and hold it. Is there a trade-off between those two numbers? Meaning, if we try putting in even more plantings, will it make any difference on uh, the speed of the loss on the beach?
There's a threshold.
Is, so I'm trying to see if there's a trade-off here that will spend more on one category versus the other for longer term. I do not know the answer.
I'm kind of with John. I mean, eight hundred thousand seems like a lot. It seems if if we didn't have a hurricane in ten, ten years, and we were doing this ours for ten years most, we don't even put eight hundred thousand on the beach.
Exactly.
We lose it all.
Exactly. And just visually, I just, we all have seen the beach as of late and it was worse in twenty nineteen.
Yes, it was.
Yeah, but you don't, you don't want to hamstring yourself just picking a a a a maximum number. There's no there's no downside to have the ability to maybe just put in five hundred thousand. It's all we needed. But we were willing to do eight hundred thousand if it was necessary. Because we don't know what happens until the dredgers actually show up that day, what is planned for the island. I would, I would, if I'm understanding everyone correctly, I see no upside to, you know, put in.
Well, I don't think, I don't think. Yeah, I don't think that we should not, like, we should change the.
Yeah, you said keep the money there, but let's improve it when we get to the point of making the decision.
But I think somebody has to, we have to make sure we 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 stay very, very uh, you know, on top of what that number is going to be. When the time comes, we say, well, why are we not doing six fifty? Because that's the goal.
Right. And Nicole, I mean, you understand what you're saying. You have a lot of experience here. The, there's no upside in putting too much sand. But there's a big downs, there there's no upside. And they can be, you know, an upside to adding any sand. But how do you approximate what's the correct amount of sand to be in the, it just by the the actual template that's been designed? So when the actual dredging begins, we're going to stick with that template? Is that correct?
Correct. So that template, every time we go through the permitting process, we analyze it to see if there need to be modifications made to that. So uh, based upon, you know, historical trends, this is the, you know, template you need to maintain a certain width of beach for X amount of years. So we look at the pre-construction um, beach profile surveys, we care, compare it to the construction template. And then we come up with a volume. In some places, you know, near Blind Pass, we may need to modify that template, tuck it in a little bit. So we don't have any large infill into Blind Pass. However, you know, in areas where, you know, you're up nor near uh, South Seas where there's unlikely impacts that there, we would likely build the full construction template.
But you've already designed something. So wherever the chips fall, when we do the beach remuneration, we 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 have a budget of up to eight hundred thousand. We're not going to throw an extra stand, sand just because, if anything, we're going to try to build our dunes as much as we can because dunes are fantastic.
Correct. So we we.
I that's for the.
I would say, all all things being equal, next sprint, because obviously we don't know the condition nine months in. But let's just go with what we have today. All things being equal, we set the goal and we say, you find two hundred thousand cubic yards. Spread it across the five miles in in the best engineering uh, approach as possible, two hundred thousand. One sixty, two hundred will pick a number, twenty percent.
Are you talking, I don't understand what you're telling me about there.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about the overall dredging volume.
The problem with that is the, the price per goes up.
Well, Dan, you said we had um, what what was the uh?
No, that's not true, but.
Plus or minus twenty-five percent.
No, no, I I would take the.
He's not saying a hundred and sixty thousand total. He's saying eight hundred plus.
But the price does go up if you.
But wait, wait, no, no. Let's ask to someone who has the. This is like asking Siri, hey Nicole, whether we do fifty thousand shares or eight hundred thousand shares? Fifty thousand yards or five hundred thousand yards, is the price still going to be twenty? Is the, the the mobilization still still going to be seven million? And is it going to be a constant twenty-four dollars cubic yard? It does not escalate.
It's twenty-five percent, Renee. Dan said we have, we can swing twenty-five percent in either direction.
But that's not what I'm talking about. Whether we do.
If it's a hundred thousand, obviously we're not doing that.
Effective cost of the unit price. Cost of ten million bucks.
Of course, yes, the effective cost, I mean, it becomes less efficient. If we had one point six million cubic yard, we'd be paying a hell of a lot less in mobilization. There's really not anything we can do about that.
That's right. Okay, that's, but that's, I'm still back on seals. I'm sorry, I didn't get off that one yet. But if you look at it, I did my arithmetic and it's somewhere around three or four plants per linear foot of the island. When I see it going, we frequently were were thicker than that. So even though it says eight hundred thousand, unless I didn't get written for wrong, um, I'm not sure.
My approach blended to that is that uh, even if you wiped it out, it's a million bucks.
It's a small number.
Yeah. It's it's it's.
Well, I I would like to see some trade-offs from Nicole about if we invested more in plantings. What does she think?
Which is what we're doing in the village here, for sure.
But you already are. I I can't understand.
This is three times, almost three times as much as we can possibly.
Yeah, I mean, look. Linda, how many, how many years have you been on this? How many reimbursements have you seen?
Been on this island as a homeowner, twenty-five years.
Okay, so you're seeing over future.
How much I can, can I?
The bottom line is, we are very aggressive. We plant as much as possible. We are going full month.
I agree. Is not really on the table, Starz.
So yeah.
What is?
The the addressing the planting, I think it's.
We're wasting time when we do.
I'm sorry, I I think that there's really only one, we've already tried to get you to move on the mobilization and they did. I think we have to just figure out what we're willing to live with when the time comes and shoot for less cubic yards.
Okay.
That's going to move the needle quite a bit.
Okay. So if you look at both proposals, the difference is three million and change on mobilization with uh, the uh, Great Lakes. However, the difference of make, you know, it's really hilarious, the delta on the sand is four million. Right. So everything else is a little less expensive. Now, what, ask yourself.
Reputation and experience that we've had with Great Lakes who's done it the last three.
So what we have to look at here is why is Great Lakes coming in with a big number of mobilization? The answer is because that's where ninety-five percent of their profit is going to be. Everything else. Maybe there's a little profit here and there, but that's pure profit we're staring at. So what they're doing is saying this is where we make our money. Everything else is what likely we break. And the other.
They've been one during this period and then they go out. They can deal with them.
Right. So everything else is a little less. I mean, can we cut to the quick, Nicole? What is your basic business intuition say? And which one would you recommend? Because in a way, the prices are the same, except it's a few million less with uh, Great Lakes. Uh, I'm a little disappointed in Great Lakes because we've done a lot of business with them. And I was hoping they would at least knock off a million dollars on the demo, the mobilization demo. But no, Nicole, let's go right from the bull's eye. What is your opinion on the general bids here and what would you recommend and why?
So I would recommend uh, going with Great Lakes um, just because their cost is the cheaper of the two, even though they have a larger mobilization. And also you're coming with experience. Um, Great Lakes has built the um, past project in twenty twenty-one. They built the project in twenty thirteen. They did your emergency project in two thousand eight. And they did a regular nourishment project in oh, five, oh, six. So coming from that experience, um, I think it says a lot. They know the island, they know the players and I would feel um, very comfortable having them come in and do the project.
Okay, so it's experience. And what about the costs? I mean, we're in the terms of family business now. Yeah, how come, I mean, how come they didn't show us a little love on the uh, mobile demo?
So it's a physical, it's a fixed cost, physical. And obviously it's B S, but we had our chance to negotiate that and we didn't do it without blowing up, obviously. And then we can look back at Monday morning quarterback, that's all we want. Next time, if I'm involved, I know we'll definitely be addressing it sooner than later.
Right.
Okay, because we go from five point seven or whatever it was last time, the ten million is absurd.
So Nicole, what is your opinion? Why do you think they went so high? Why should we accept that? Because the site, there's no, there's no love for our lawyer.
Well, right now, dredges are in high demand post-storm. So we do see this um, with dredgers. In periods of high demand, mobilization costs are higher. It's been a trend in the industry after, you know, larger storm periods. They just know that people need the projects and they commit, you know, demand those costs. So it's unfortunately, uh, it is business at the end of the day and um, we have seen this historically, that during high-demand eras like oh, five, oh, six, the mobilization costs were very large as well.
Okay. And of these unit prices, which are some that we might not have to pay? Such as screening to remove unacceptable material. So we might not have to pay that if there's no unacceptable material. Okay.
And the turtle trolling.
So essentially, we, if we went full eight hundred thousand yards, we're talking twenty-six and.
Correct.
What is our percentage? And Nicole officially recommends Great Lakes due to their experience.
We've got to go back and say, maybe you're resting final.
Right.
We can't, I mean, I don't know how much negotiation we can do without doing it with the other bidders.
Guys, with all due respect, that's what our meeting was in 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 May. We said that's what we would do for the last sixty days. So we're kind of behind the, you know, the eight ball there.
So.
They want, we're at a point now where we we set this special meeting, um, because we're going to, these bids are going to expire.
Right. I wanted to point out if the drop six hundred, that the cost in the Great Lakes and Weeks becomes approximately the same because of the difference in the incremental costs. Okay, so one drops maybe four million, the other one, whatever, but they they become approximately the same.
Right.
Um, if they go up, Great Lakes, because they're, if we increase, obviously, because the sand is cheaper from them, we pay less.
Good point.
Very good.
Okay.
Very good.
There's another element to this that I want to emphasize, which is we're not done with funding. If we had a hundred percent funding for this project, would we care who was thirty million, but no five? Not really. Maybe a little bit, but hardly. The fact of the matter is, is that we're not done funding this project. We're well, well ahead and where we were in two thousand nineteen with regards to funding. But the goal is to get a hundred percent funding. And right now, we are doing pretty well. I'm a little disappointed. We didn't get a commitment for a hundred percent before we were able to commit to the bid. But the fact of the matter is, is if we can get the volume down, you shave off, you get down closer to twenty-three, we're looking at probably they um, getting ninety-plus percent funding for this by this winter. Maybe, maybe close to a hundred. We still have, we still have.
Then the funding did we get from the public last?
He's saying that.
Correct.
No, but you said we would, we would get ninety percent. We'd be down for about three that we don't.
That means we have to pay though.
We had a little bit of setback in one of, one of the uh, one of the grants that we that we're pursuing. Uh, we found out at the last minute after we put the application in, is that they're only reimbursing, I don't know if it's in, so inform you guys of this. They're only reimbursing based on uh, costs incurred. Which really stinks because that fund is basically uh, left open to anybody who can grab that money as they incur costs. Me and Dan can look into possibly.
But it's not being incurred at all.
Yeah. So we said, well, what can we incur ahead of time? And we really came up short on that, so.
Have Great Lakes been, been, one of their agreement, bill us twenty-five million.
That's what he said. He said it has to be the work done.
Yeah.
I was right with you on that.
Okay.
So I went over that and I have up on the screen the the two obligated grants through the F D E P. The first one in line for reimbursement funding is F D E P grant twenty-three L E seven. This is direct relation to Hurricane Ian. Uh, that grant is worth thirteen point, or thirteen million, two hundred and forty-four thousand. It's at a hundred percent cost share. So the first thirteen point two million dollars of the project is a hundred percent paid or reimbursed through them. The kicker for this one is that these funds must be used by December thirty-first of next year with the deliverables to the state by September of next year. So with a May start timeframe, that's really, we're pushing it. We can get an extension potential, potentially, but it's risky and we risk jeopardizing thirteen point two million dollars if we don't move forward. The uh, the next grant from F D E P that takes place is the one that's upcoming twenty-five L E one. That's based of our, based off of our public access percentage that we typically get. Um, and then that's for any cost above the thirteen point two million. And lastly, I've kind of projected a bit.
So they reverse twenty-one point oh seven percent of, it says costs above.
Costs above twenty-three L E seven. So anything left over after the thirteen point two is expended.
They call it ten million dollars every place.
I have another slide showing some specific numbers. And then uh.
Does it make sense? I mean, I know we talked about it a million times, it's hard, providing more public access.
Welcome to the conversation.
We're going to go down that rabbit hole.
A lot of people live there, so it's like, don't even dream of walking down.
All right, moving on.
And so the the last item on this slide is unsecured funding. This is utilizing the exact same uh, calculations the county utilized last time, which is roughly thirty point five percent of residual funds. And they also gave us a million dollar cost share reduction. We still have to go out and secure these and hopefully additional funds from the county to further reduce our costs.
They don't have money?
They got a ton of county.
Yeah, because.
Since Ian, their tax structure.
Yeah, but their property taxes have gone way up.
Either way, go to that call.
All right.
So I've uh, performed, I've performed a uh, comparative uh, of each of the bids, applying the grant formulas to them. Uh, as you can see, the different costs, uh, the residual costs, if we went with Great Lakes, Fred and Doc would be six point four, three million dollars. If we went with Weeks Marine, the residual cost would be roughly seven point two million dollars. There's about an eight hundred thousand dollar price difference between the three of them. Um, of course, these are all percentage based, so if we, if we do adjust the volume of sand placed, these numbers will obviously change.
Yeah, that number's three point four. Right? On Great Lakes, if we, if we were to shave off twenty percent?
Yeah, I got three eight, oh, twenty percent. I had to use twenty-five and three nine.
Yeah, but at the end of the day, we're talking anywhere from, without any more money coming in, anywhere from three million to six million for the uh, citizens.
It's already estimated contribution from our dollars.
Uh, I would estimate roughly one point five, one point four, one point five million of on earmark funds.
What did the community pay the last beach donation? What was there?
I just put it.
Six million, look at that.
Okay, so, yeah, so the previous beach nourishment, our costs were twenty point one million dollars uh, before.
Would be six. Last time would be nine.
Yeah. So we were almost nine million dollars before the C E P D contributed two million dollars to last beach nourishment project. And then we assessed out based off of roughly six point nine million dollars.
I don't like this comparison. It was two years ago.
I know, exactly. It makes you feel real good when you look into numbers, but that's supposed to last eight to ten.
Yeah, I I and I don't, and and I think, I don't, I I think we still have room to find to to put our efforts into finding more funding.
No, but it just, it helps to.
I agree a hundred percent of you said, but we gotta, then we're deciding today whether we move forward and then we have a lot of work to do to shave. Is it, that's all right, the numbers feel good, oh look, we're saving money, but it's.
No, we're not saving money.
Is it um, I I'm having a, is it so hard for us to really think about what? Changing that eight hundred number to say six hundred or six fifty would 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 really do for us? I mean, the downside, I don't really think it would be measurable, I'll be honest with you. Now that obviously.
I'm about to challenge Nicole and tell us why.
I think that's the right thing is, Nicole should tell us.
Because three million dollars will go a long way.
Yep, yep, and yes, I agree.
All right.
I'll provide, you know, my recommendations, uh, you know, opinion of staff that both bidders are equally qualified to perform the work. Uh, the beach and dune systems have eroded enough to warrant a beach nourishment this time. Um, the kind of downfall, if a bid is not selected during this advertisement period, future funds. Our future bids will likely be the same or higher costs. Uh, we potentially risk losing thirteen point two million dollars in grant funding if we don't move forward. And additionally, you know, this is minor, but the recertification of construction plans would need to occur. Likely resulting in a cost, engineering cost of roughly another hundred thousand dollars. So it's a recommendation of staff that we move forward with the lowest qualified bidder under bidder bid. Alternative C, which is Great Lakes dredging docks to perform the island of my nerves now.
But but the chance was with everybody else. So if we were, if we put the chance and we have one point five to spend from our coffees is what I heard, is that correct?
Roughly one point four, one point five uh unencumbered funds.
You don't want to spend a one point five?
We don't have that. He has, he has a million dollars grant money. That money was supposed to go towards the uh, towards the dunes.
That was the loss of revenue for the parking lot.
So we don't have.
We have a half of them.
We have a half of them. Thank you, okay, so that, okay, so that says it's five point eight and then we subtract three. For not doing as much or four for, and so we're somewhere around two to three million. That we have to get out of the residence. Okay, that's what I wanted to hear about.
Okay, so before I ask for a motion, I just want to point out that our constituency. We go ahead with a big store and they had to show up fifteen million. That it would be night fights to get that check in. Protect their ten million dollar home and they gotta show up thirty grand. It's a nonstarter. I would, we we do our best to keep it as low as possible. I just want everyone to be cognizant of the fact of that. I would like to see a motion to, if someone would like to make the motion to select. Both Nicole's and Director Dan's recommendation of Great Lakes. Being the uh, construction company of choice for the next beach without, does anyone want to make that motion?
I would so.
I would like to hear from the rest of the board before.
Well, you know, when you tell you, when you make the motion, then this, then then it starts to speak, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I would um also move that we select Great Lakes.
You gotta, oh yeah, yeah, so you're making the motion.
I'm so, yeah, that we 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 select Great Lakes.
Oh, there's a second. I sorry, I sorry, here we go now.
Okay, and I think we decide, in my opinion, we don't. We don't need to go into is it six hundred or eight hundred today? I think that's a bigger topic and we should discuss it. Um, I know how you feel about the value of protecting the houses. I went through and tried to do an analysis of what, if, okay, so I know, okay. Uh, if you spend a dollar here, what does it do in terms of real savings? Because especially.
Wait, wait, you have to then look at Dr. Bill Strong's assessments over the years. The millions of dollars being saved when you invest a dollar, it was nine to one, remember it was like nine to one.
Well, I don't.
Eight to one.
If you look at expected value of that and the way I was looking at it. I think we need to talk about it because also with the houses, where they are right now. What we're talking about is savings when the surge goes through, basically. And so I think that's another discussion to have. It's not saying that the houses aren't going to get hurt. It's protecting from the surges and from the flooding.
Well, that's something we definitely, then we are.
Okay, but we need to have that discussion, separate meeting we have.
With flood.
It's it's flood, it's not.
Higher the dunes, the more protection. Just ask Sanibel.
Yes, but the question is, if, if I'm spending ten thousand dollars, if we're spending ten thousand dollars to protect somebody's landscaping. Is that what we should be doing?
No, you're not, no, that's not fair.
Well, that's the discussion.
No, it's. Okay, because there is, when when a storm hits, there's a lot of debris that uh, it's not just the land. First of all, landscaping, you know, you show me someone that's got landscape insurance and I'll show you bacon that's cooked. There is no landscape, you have landscape?
Nobody has insurance for that anymore and people have saturated most of their floodways, okay, that's true.
I don't disagree with that. Well, I think.
You have to look at.
It's not a hundred percent, obviously, but a a lot of our argument it uh range true. And that it's mostly for landscaping damage.
That's right, that's what I got to get with.
If if the houses are up to spec and they're.
Houses not elevated, that's not our problem.
That's right.
And so, and if you build out underneath, that's not our problem. I think that's not our problem.
We've been preaching that for three years.
Right, that's not our problem. So what are we saving? And I don't think that is the discussion.
Well, I'll tell you.
That's where you say. I agree with everything you said, but what do you, what's your?
My point is, is it six hundred or eight hundred? I, and the answer, and Renee's position is always, we put the, we put the dunes high. And the more the merrier. And I'm saying there's diminishing returns and what we're doing is saving.
Once a fund of three point eight, we might save the world on six hundred, I think we all be fine.
I don't know.
But I want to answer your question because I think you're missing the big picture of all that. You look at Santa, and they got hit with a fourteen foot tidal surge and they were disaster. It's an absolute disaster there and it's still a disaster. You go to Captiva, oh, the fourteen foot surge was just a four foot surge and yet they can sell all, oh well, it was different, it was the one, it's nonsense. We have, we have built our elevation ten feet higher over the years. So thus, the consequences of this storm where entire homes were destroyed. Because they were ten feet low, you know, homes were just swept away.
Yes, but I think your analysis, I'm not agreeing with your analysis at this point, okay? I think you look down at the island, where that it got hit was the East End was the worst. And there was reflection of late waves all throughout the Paws Way and all of that. I don't know the right economic height of the waves. But I think we need to take into a fact, fact that our job is not to protect landscaping, I don't think.
You call landscaping, I disagree. It's 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 protecting your structure and Santa Bell is the perfect example of homes that were elevated.
Do you want me to finish?
Yeah, but you're, we're trying to make a point.
I'm not saying we have to agree today. There's a recreation view of the beach and all that other stuff, but we need to think about.
We had a beach, we'd be sad about. That's the.
There's, did we, okay, so. This is just for later discussion.
Yes, okay, agreed. So we have a vote on the table. Does anyone else want to make any comments? Everyone's good, all right. All in favor?
All right.
Uh, two names. Motion's passed, congratulations, Great Lakes. And now.
Okay, and I think we need to communicate to Captiva.
What, they don't need as much sand because it's really expensive.
Okay, uh, we choose, okay, I would like, I think we need to communicate to Captiva. That we took this vote today, we passed, we selected, here's what we expect to have happen so that people know. Okay, because most of them they know.
And I think you should go ahead and drop, or in our motion, we need to cover the cost, and I need you a hundred percent.
Yeah, me too, Joe. We have the reputation.
But also, also, I, I'd said this in previous meetings and it's going to be. My priority with the administration is that is to fortify the dunes. Far more than we have on the path. We did not get a chance, we put the sea oats down, but they didn't get a chance to take hold last time. We're going to take it one step further and at least in the village area, where we can, we're going to fortify it beyond um sea oats. With with real plant base. And I think the more time, if we get a, if we get a little bit of luck, if the if the weather cooperates.
They will.
We, those dudes uh really could be fortified much better than they were as we did in the last year.
I think you should put a lower seabirds.
Yeah, that's part of the plan.
Well, you have to be careful with some of that.
Because.
A lot of view.
Yeah, those things grow, I I mean, I know those.
They'll have to be near.
Sort of green waters and stuff except for. There were some very nice and broom seabirds coming down.
Are doing great.
I know, some are growing great and some are perfectly growing at the same height too.
Oh, you can't see, all right, so uh, well, that's.
You gotta do it right, like my, you have the DPs there, you have to have a professional and you got twenty percent.
It will require ongoing maintenance if we go that route, but it'll be worth it.
Yes.
Well, that's a topic for another day. So new, can we go to, okay, we selected our beach nourishment bid. Can we go to new business?
Yes, so the the lone topic of the new business section is to formalize a date for our tentative budget. And uh, hearing day.
When do we usually do that?
We usually do that at our September board meeting, uh, which would be September ninth at five oh one PM. There's uh, what staff would propose.
How many people you need for that?
Four.
You can tell.
It's Monday, it's typically, so we host our our regular board meeting in September. We started at three PM so that it concludes right at five, so we just adjourn for a minute and re-adjourn, or reconvene.
Yeah, that's a must.
Why four and not three?
Uh, because it's.
Sorry?
You said four, why four not?
You started at three?
It has to be, it has to be at five oh one PM by the regulation for the trim.
Is that what you're saying? Our normal meeting that day will not start at one, it will start at three.
Right. No, no, I was asking about the 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 forum. You said fourteen instead of the normal.
Because if we were to propose any, an increase in our mileage rate, we need a a sixty.
Super majority.
Yeah, we need a super majority, which for our board is four out of five.
I'm sorry.
So you're. Okay, so I'm I'm.
But that's, we're not, that's not to approve the budget, is it?
That is to approve the tentative budget, so we have to have two separate hearings within fifteen days of each other.
So can I speak to that a little bit? Because uh, my understanding is is that if we were to approach. Uh, a vast change to the military. It would require some, at some point, a unanimous, depending on how far we go, a unanimous vote.
Mm-hmm, that's great.
I was going to win.
Tom, do you remember when?
There's a percentage, a pers, there's a percentage rate, if you go higher than a certain percent of the rollback rate, then you need. A super majority and even higher than you need a unanimous, it depends on how high you go.
Super being four, but a unanimous being five obviously.
If you want to go higher. Ralph, what happens if we just want to keep it as is? How many votes?
A simple, a simple majority.
Agreed.
And so how much, how many, how much can we increase it with four?
Like it's a, there's a scale, we can get that.
Oh, and then what you point about increasing, property taxes went up ten percent because of the the the. The price, so we're going to get ten percent more without even changing the rates.
That's not exactly true.
No?
No, because we we set the rate based off of what's going to generate the same amount of revenues as previous year. So if property values have gone up, then the the mileage rate would go down to meet that, however, if we maintain.
If the mileage rate the same.
Right, which isn't the rollback rate, that's.
So Ralph, we, we, can we have three people to keep the mileage rate the same as the year before?
You, three people to keep the rollback rate the same and then plus you get a certain amount more and then add a.
All right, Ralph, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we have to calculate that.
Your instincts are bad, forgive me. My question is, if we wish, you know, the rollback rate.
If you keep, if you, if you keep the same mileage rate, you can likely do that by just simple majority vote.
Great.
Three people.
Okay, so and and so we would get more money because all the values, thus taxes would be more.
If that's true, but I don't, that's not my understanding of how.
We have to check to make sure, because it's all based on the rollback rate.
Yeah, we we have to make the decision on the budget number, not the mileage rate. So we set a budget that we want to pursue. And then we apply the mileage rate to that.
Well, yeah, or you just.
We would just need to reverse engineer that number to figure out what that budget would be for keeping the mileage rate the same.
You're gonna come in on budget this year?
Yes.
Are we sitting coming under budget this year?
For our expenses, yes, it's typically we only approve the general side of the budget. The capital is more for internal purposes. So the capital always runs at a deficit.
This year, what was the reserve?
Um.
If we get.
So we're all tense, struggling, got people that are hurting.
Yeah, my, this is where I was.
Construction costs are.
I may speak for one second, please. I I think that you should just have a discussion and I was going to work with John and Dan. Over the next ninety days to put some numbers together to see if we want to explore. Putting a much more robust uh reserve together based on us hopefully having still an eight year. Earnish, we we nourishment cycle and being able to have a uh, an emergency reserve. But we can, maybe it's not going to obviously cover as much as we want, but it'll be better than having nothing. And I think it'll be a lot more digestible if we can fund it through Advalor and Moliere. And that will require. You know, a substantial increase um that if we're willing to go that route, as long as it's. As long as it's carved out for a very specific need and doesn't get lost in some sort of smudge fund.
Right.
Thank you.
I think it's, is there, are there possibilities of um funding it besides Advalor? Is putting additional taxes on bed tax?
You brought this up in the past and and I think it's an idea, it should be explored, I don't know how viable.
Yeah, that's a whole other.
I have the the statute, a rate of not more than a hundred and ten percent of the rollback rate. Based on the previous year's maximum mileage rate, adjusted for change in per cap of Florida personal income. May be approved by a two thirds vote of the membership. A rate in excess of a hundred and ten percent may be adopted um by by refer, uh, unanimous, by three fourths or unanimous.
Need more.
We'll have all this for you when we do the tentative and final budget.
That's my point. I think we should be prepared for uh, you know, what we need instead of coming.
But let's, let's say you want to do.
We'll bring all this to you in the tentative and the final budget hearings that'll occur in the fall.
You should probably do what you're suggesting, I think we can do it.
I agree.
And will there be five votes whenever the final vote is made? Is that October?
Uh, it's within fifteen, we have to, we typically do it within fifteen days of tentative.
Which is September.
What I propose is September ninth.
So you got nine and then twenty-second, third, whatever we do.
So when are you coming back from?
Not till the end of the month.
Till when?
End of the month. I'm going for two to three weeks.
End of uh, September?
Yeah.
Well, we'll just, we we.
If you do it earlier.
We'll know whether we need you or not.
Yes, when we do it earlier than I can do it, I mean, I think the.
Well, wait a second, can she vote? Does she? Her, can her vote be accepted?
Telephone.
Who's talking?
You could do remote if you all approve the, this is Ralph.
Yeah.
Um, any member can appear by telephone, Zoom, if you, if you approve that.
It's so, when you have a phone, you go to WhatsApp and you have wireless there. And it would be uh, unfortunately, it would.
You'll need a.
They don't need to lay that clock.
And inform their person.
Oh, no, five o'clock, uh, one thirty, two o'clock.
Okay.
Just like, like Rob's. Just like, like Rob said, don't have so much wine that night.
Do we need a, a actual vote on this date?
Do we need it now?
Okay, well, the month is it? I'm expecting to be able to do it.
You can, um, you're gonna have to put notices in the newspaper and things, so.
Right, just to be thick, can we do?
If you can't get it today, you'll have to call and pull the members and get it going.
We need to vote because we need to report it to the state, rep, state, um, Revenue Office.
All right, so I'll make, I'll make a motion to set the preliminary budget date of September ninth, five oh one P M.
I'll second.
All in favor?
I, I.
All right, message unanimously, that's.
Seven P M?
No, it'd be later. It's one o'clock here, it's seven o'clock. One course is sleep at eleven o'clock. You go out to dinner, you'll, you'll be, you'll be sick, hold on, I need my phone.
Don't go to road, you're not gonna go to dinner at ten o'clock.
Set some merit motion order, okay, one more, I, I have a question.
Yeah, but the, the term, the term should be tentative, as opposed to preliminary vote, on the statute, the actual word is.
Make a correction of my motion to read tentative of the budget, tentative budget.
Thank you, Ralph, yes, yeah, thanks, Ralph.
My question, is there anything that the other commissioners could be doing to help you all?
Call Dan, Nancy.
Nancy, right?
Right. We don't know yet.
Okay, well, if you do, let me know, please.
I know in the upcoming month, we'll, we'll be requesting to, uh, have meetings with you guys individually to discuss the budget.
And then a workshop within the next.
Okay.
And then a workshop following everybody.
Workshops over the next six weeks.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay.
Okay, now, um, commissioners' comments, I have a question. Uh, I heard through the panel that the CEPD might take over the Iguana.
That is something under consideration, uh, that the commissioners would have to vote on to accept, but that is a number that we are going to be exploring, putting into our budget and exploring grant opportunities to recover those funds.
If you can get grant offers, we're working with John.
No, 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 it's not, it's, it's a wash.
Yeah, the idea.
So what we've heard actually is that we may be able to take, uh, money from state appropriations for that, so we're investigating that a little.
We'd be doing.
I don't think that if you, we are charter. That we have to really prove that Iguanas are.
We got Nicole's opinion on it, that they, uh.
They get big holes in the dunes and eat the vegetation.
Destroy seawalls and dune vegetation.
If we can, if we can make it and it's zero wash on a budget.
Yeah.
I'm totally in concurrence with them.
All right, so how can we make a motion, so we don't wait six months to get it done? Because I want that Iguana guy there three times a week.
It'd be in the budget.
Okay, so do we need a motion now?
We can't.
We can?
We cannot do it in this meeting, if, uh, if we'd like to have a discussion on it at the August board meeting and make a motion, we can do that.
I already, it's coming next Wednesday.
Zero cost.
Twenty-eight hundred dollar rifle, your rifle?
It's in there, yeah, and it's, uh, it's got a scope.
You're too much money.
No, you're paid it. No, 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 I took Arizona Air Guns. Now, if you see, if you've seen.
Maybe be adjourned at this point?
I just have one more comment, and maybe this gets overlooked, but I just wanted to extend a public appreciation to the CCA for allowing us this meeting space, I don't think we mentioned it enough.
Yeah, you're good.
I privately thank her a lot, but.
Motion to adjourn a second, all in favor?
I, I, done.
It's so wonderful to see all of you.